Under God into this vault with liberty and justice.
Minutes were in your packets, uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried, approval of the bills. Motion and a second to approve the bills, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Aye.
Will Homie.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye. Motion carries, approval of the financial reports.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the financials, roll call please.
Otis.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Will Homie.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Aye. Motion carried.
Aye.
Well, sorry.
I was thinking there was one more, but maybe I wasn't paying attention. Okay, we all caught up. Okay, uh, approval of the agenda, any additions to the agenda?
I would like to add if I could Sidwell for GIS training under new business, just discussion.
Sidwell?
Yes.
And then I would like to add, uh, insurance department relocation.
Yep.
Discussion.
Yep.
Sheriff, do we want to talk about the, um, DHS list?
Yeah, we should probably, yeah.
Add that. So, and with those amendments, I would be approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Sarah, you're first on the list.
Good morning, um, just a few things from, uh, NDSU Extension here in Ramsey County, um. Uh, we're gonna see, um, a bunch of kids coming in today, uh, we've got some classes, uh, that we advertise through the park board, uh, Home Alone, Are You Ready is today. Um, and then tomorrow, we've got a babysitting class, all are full, so, uh, twenty in each class, getting all those kiddos ready for summer and, um. Uh, getting ready to help watch our kids and, um, hang out, so, uh, safely. Uh, so that's today, um, another thing that we wanted to just mention is that our four H achievement days is coming up. And that's June twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth. Um, this is gonna look a little bit different this year because all of the events will be held out at the, uh, Ramsey County Fairgrounds. The, if you haven't been there in a while, check it out, the multipurpose building, uh, should be complete, uh, or close to. Um, for our, all of our events which will be held out there, so, uh, we just wanted to, um, mention that all the events are free and open to the public. Um, the fair board is having, uh, a ribbon cutting ceremony on Saturday, uh, the twenty-eighth. So, uh, you can check out their social media for all of the, uh, events that they're having, but we just wanted to give you guys what's happening for four H. Yeah, we'll hand that out, and then, uh, we've had another committee, an achievement day committee, that's, uh, um, I think each year. Uh, it's gonna be a bigger event, so they're planning, um, some fun events, some family oriented, uh, things happening. So, um, yeah, come on out, uh. For those, check out our social media, uh, NDSU Extension Ramsey County for more details. I just had a few of those, uh, last ones, Commissioner Frith, so, um, if you guys wanna share those, that'd be, that'd be wonderful, but. Um, one addition is we're having a celebrity round robin, uh, which, uh, a round robin event is where, uh, the kids show their animals. All of the different species of animals and, um, give an award, but. This year, we're having a celebrity round robin, so, um, check that out, it's gonna be a fun event. Right, Commissioner Gessner?
Yeah, that's what they tell me.
Um, so, uh, another thing, uh, Lindsay just wanted us to, wanted me to mention that she, they're putting together a junior. Crop Scout Field Day on Tuesday, July fifteenth, um, they're gonna have that at, uh, in the Hampton area, so. Uh, Hampton and the Koma area, so, um, different part of our county, so, uh, just a good, great time to teach our, our youth. Um, all sorts of, uh, agricultural practices, so. Just in a nut- a nutshell, what we've got happening coming up, anybody has any questions for us?
No, sounds like you're busy.
We are, yep. Yep, lots of, lots of questions coming in for lawns and trees and such too, so. It's always something.
Anybody got anything for Sarah? All right, Sarah, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
You wanna stick your head in the waterboard door and let John know we're ready? Uh, we'll keep it moving on here, Chris, we'll jump to you.
All right, good morning, everybody, uh. It came to my attention a little while back that we were having radio degradation on State One. I went out and radio tested, um, in multiple different locations, and it just seemed like we were not getting range. I called, uh, Stones, they re- uh, they came, uh, last Friday. And then, that was with Alec, and then Alec called Mike from Grand Forks. Mike came, he went on top of the building, we found the antenna, the cable going up to the antenna was broken, so. The tower they don't want climate, it's just too, too many years of it slaying in the breeze. And, uh, I hope you guys got a chance to see the bill. They did a, uh, I, I think a really fair bill, this is kind of a Band-Aid till the new system shows up, so. Um, they're planning on putting a, um, roof mount, um, and glue it to the rubber on top, so we have at least a, a tower. Um, on State One.
So, the new, the new system you're talking is siren?
Siren, correct, yep.
So then we won't need the tower?
What's up?
With the new system, we won't need that tower?
Um, they don't believe so.
Quote, unquote.
Quote, unquote.
Jeff, you have something?
I, I was just gonna ask what the timeline was for that permanent replacement.
I don't have any clue on sirens.
Okay.
Replacement, it's been.
It's been the next two years, yeah, it's been two years down the road for about five years.
I think the last time we were talking at the, uh, crib meeting, there was still unknown, um. They put a concrete pad down for the building up on ski jump, and then, all those days of rain. Was the day they were, uh, trying to get electrical up there, so. We're moving, it's just slow, slow moving. I think we're also waiting on the eighteen T tower by Camp Craft as well, that one also has concrete and electrical now.
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the, uh, price quote from Stones for the repair of State One communications up on the. Roof of the courthouse here.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the bid for antenna replacement, uh, on the courthouse roof. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carried, thank you, Chris.
No, thank you, everybody.
John, you're up.
All right, quick update on our waterboard meeting, we just, uh, got done. The Lawton Cooley, we are, have not received any reply back from Nelson County to take and see if. Anything could be done to relieve water on the east end of Lawton and run it through our. Clear Bartlett Snag and Clear, so that's still in motion. The other snag and clear that we did get a petition on for Newbury Township, we are moving forward with, uh. KLJ gave us the basin and the parcels, and we are asked Johnson Excavating to give us a. Bid on the work to make sure we have a viable project there, so we're just working on that, Channel A assessments. We have not received the map from Cavalier County to take and see where. How many parcels are in Channel A, so we can get this maintenance done on Channel A with those culverts. We are going to take and contact them, get the parcels, so we can get the assessments to candy, so that they can get put on next year's taxes. We are going to do some cattail spraying on some natural waterways. For what we have budgeted, I mean, up to, not over, and it doesn't look like we should even come close to that. The letter you have before you, there, I needed some clarification from our legal. On snag and clears because there's been brought up about adverse impacts downstream from a snag and clear. And so that is the opinion that we got back from our legal. And so if, when this Newbury comes, if it comes to you guys for approval, you have what he thinks. Oh, I mean, how it should affect the adverse impact should affect any kind of project like that. Other than that. Really, that was basically the gist of our meeting, any questions for me on the letter or anything else?
Been waiting a long time for Nelson County or Cavalier County to get back to you, is it just?
Nelson County, I talked to the chairman, I think it was February, and they were aware of it. And I was gonna bring it to the board, and I have not heard back, so, I'm, I'm gonna reach out and take and see on that. As far as Cavalier County, we had a joint board, they're on board with it, but they're having issues trying to find the original assessment list.
Okay.
So, just to take and, uh.
Government.
Well, they have their office manager up there too, so, I, I don't know how acclimated she is to the commission.
Very good.
I do have a question, John.
Yes.
This letter in response to the commission's decision at the last, um. Waterboard meeting, in that there was a lot of public comment about the adverse effects downstream from the snag and clear. Is this about the current project that's being considered?
It was, I reached out because of, uh, for clarification, because some of the comments that were made during that public meeting. And some of the pu- comments that are made in our meeting.
Okay.
When we're talking about something like this.
And so just to clarify, for the commission, this is talking about legally what has to be considered, not what. The waterboard or the commission can consider about the harmful effects downstream.
Yeah, legal versus empathy.
Right. Just, I wanted to make sure I was understanding, thank you.
Anything else for John? Very good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Jason, you wanna get started, we might have to interrupt you here at eight thirty, but.
All right, good morning, everyone, um, I sent you guys my, my agenda for today, so we'll start right at the top there. Update on the South Minnewalkin Project, eighty-ninth street, that's, uh, set to start today. The, we had the pre-job meeting last week with, with Close and KLJ and everything's on schedule there, um, we just needed the contract signed from. Like, you guys have that now, so we'll get that done. In the meeting though, there was discussion about soft spots on that road, there's about six thousand feet, that's pretty hammered up. So, myself and, uh, the South Minnewalkin representatives talked to Paul Gornson from KLJ. And he put a request into the state, and the state will be covering some of the repairs to those soft spots on that project. There was some grant money left, so we asked if we could use it for that, and the state has agreed to fund some of that, so. They should hopefully get some of the soft spots taken care of with the grant money, so, that, that was a po- uh, plus for them. Um, the next one, we, uh, had a request from a landowner on Ramsey County Eight and Cato Township. Sections twenty-six and thirty-five, um, it runs, it's a centerline pipe. We're gonna try to, they, they wanted to have, have us look at it for replacement, the bottom is rusted out. So, I would like to try to coordinate with the install times, the same timeframe as the one that the water board requested, that fifty-four inch on at the last meeting. Since they're only a mile apart, be a good time to try to do it while they have the equipment contract or whatever's on site. So I would need a motion, this is the same size pipe, so we don't have to do any study or anything further with it, we're replacing. The same with what was in there, so we would like to make a, or I'd like to ask for a motion to purchase the, uh. Eighty feet of twenty-four inch galvanized pipe, that'll be the polycoated pipe with the bands and the freight. It comes to four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, it may be a hair less. If we can coordinate the delivery date at the same time as the other one, that's what we're trying to do, but. So as of right now, I would like a motion for four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars to purchase that culvert.
We'd have install with this.
What's that?
There'll be install on top of that.
Well, this twenty-four inch will install, our guys will be able to handle this.
To order that culvert.
Motion to order, is there a second? Any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay, motion carried.
Okay, the next thing, it's been coming up quite often, we've been talking about is the, uh, terminal road. We, uh, I dug back, looked through all the old logs we had that we could find from the DOT. We have traffic counts ranging anywhere from three hundred cars a day on the east end to over eight hundred cars a day. The eight hundred cars a day are sporting events, and when highway, when US, anytime there's any kind of work on Highway twenty, like the underpass. Or even right now in College Drive, I guess it is through town, but it's actually State twenty, the, the counts just skyrocket there. So, we're gonna take a couple counts over the summer into the fall, and then I'll get you guys up to date, we have our own counters, we can do our own thing on that. I wanna hit all those, try to hit those peak, but right now with College Drive, you know, even the stoplights, the, the counts are higher, so. That's just an update for you guys, so you know where we're at, but, and I do have that information, if anybody'd like it, I can email to you. Or whatever, just if you wanna see it, but we have it all to shop there, so I gathered up quite a bit on that. The next thing we will move to is, I have a couple bills we need to get covered, uh, today, so. The first one I'm asking for a motion for is the North Dakota DOT Management Division. It's twelve thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents, and that's a share, our, our local share on the. Twenty-two CRE flood projects. So, I'm gonna ask them, commission to entertain a motion to pay that to the DOT.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the DOT Management Division, twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried.
The next, uh, motion I'd be like, you asked the commission to pay is for, uh, KLJ, twenty-eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars for the design engineering. For our twenty, twenty-six overlay projects, they just completed those, that's the quarry road next year from US two into quarry there on the south end. Ramsey County seven by Rocket from town out to State One, and then Ramsey County four from Ramsey County eight to State seventeen. And also Woods Rotten Road from US two down to our share of the bridge there, so.
So all of that will be overweight?
Next summer. Yes, sir, so, like I say, we need to pay for the design engineering.
I would so make a motion to pay that twenty-eight thousand six forty for design engineering.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay KLJ for their design engineering. You wanna pay that, right?
Yes, I'd like to pay.
Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Volk. Gessner.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, just, uh, heads up, I know it, it's under twenty-five hundred dollars, but I wanna let you guys know, um. Stark Weather Overhead Shop Door Opener quit working, we got all the PS doors. Twenty-three hundred ninety dollars with mileage, they count mileage out of Grand Forks basically because they don't have staff here any longer. Um, the reason I put it in here to talk about it is we're gonna pull that when we build, our, our five-year plan has a new building going up there in twenty-seven. And if that's the case, we're gonna salvage the, I mean, we just want, I just wanted you guys to know, we're not just gonna put twenty-five hundred dollars into a building. We're planning on tearing down in a year or whatever possibly, so, or if we can find somewhere to move sooner, but anyway, so that's why I put that on there, just to give you guys a heads up. Um, in case it runs over the twenty-five hundred, it shouldn't, I got it in paper, but you know how that goes. They might get into something in that ceiling that we don't move, because that ceiling's in tough shape, so. The new windows have been ordered for the Devil's Lake Shop for the north side, um, with Leon's Building Center. They've been over measured and, uh, that should be all moving forward, we're going to install those as our crew at our shop. So our guys will take care of that when we get them this fall. Updates on hiring, I'm going over to see Brian when I leave here, we had two applications for road foremen. They're both in-house employees that we have, and then we still need a maintenance two-worker, also in the shop, we're still a man short there. So we're trying to get creative and come up with some things there, I've been bouncing some ideas with Candy, she's been very helpful the last. Week or so with me, with all this stuff going on with the transition, so things are moving forward on that, so. That's where we're at there, we're still looking for some help. Um, we talked about that, the, had two new things that came up yesterday, late afternoon. One of them, um, Shane Eidsness called, and on Ramsey County Four. Uh, the gravel going north of Rocket between the asphalt and the, the two asphalt chunks there, there's a gravel stretch, stretch. There is a slew on the west side of the road in Noonan Sections twenty-four and twenty-five. And it comes through to Newbury Section, Northwest Section of nineteen, it's, he farms both sides. He said with the cleaning that he was able to do in the fall, that he could take a lot of that water off of the west side of the road where that. There's a big soft spot there, this is just south of the, the Fox Lake Crossing there. He'd be willing to let us put a culvert in there, it's basically why he called. Um, we would put a twenty-four inch culvert centerline in there and let some of that water through to that east ditch, so it could go through. The three-quarters of land affected in this are his three-quarters of land. I don't know what else we need to do as far as, he's just looking to get rid of the soft spot, and he's thinking if we can get the water off there. I said I would talk to you guys and see if we needed, would like to turn it over to the waterboard and have them look at it, see if it's a good idea, or.
Sounds like a good idea.
It sounds like a good idea, but I don't know what, if there's more, you know.
I would still think that you should go through the waterboard, since it is a new culvert or a new, I would think you should do.
That's what I was thinking too, and it came in late, like I say, so I didn't have a chance to get it to them, so this was late afternoon. And then, and that's what I'll do, I'll turn it to them, let them look at it, and he suggested that too as well, he said if they need to visit with him or whatever, he'll come into, and. So we'll do that, and then the other, the only other thing I had was, uh, Steve Olverston came in, and he would like to put a field approach. Off of Ramsey County Eight by Lawton, he's gonna be renting some land, it's on top of a hill, so, I know we looked up on the GIS, on the parcels viewer, and. And I know where it's at, and, um, I guess I'm just not sure. If, uh, that's something that has to come through you guys, or if that's something we can just handle with them.
How was this field access before?
It wasn't, it's been CRP since nineteen eighty-six, and a new farmer, or a new landowner bought it. And now they're gonna till it and farm it, he's gonna rent it from this individual.
I guess, in the past, don't we just go by the superintendent's recommendation?
Okay.
So I, you know, um, and if we need to vote on it, we need to vote on it, just go.
We, we.
Should vote on it.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, you don't have a problem with it?
No, it's not gonna impact anything, it's on top of the hill and it's just access off there, I'll make, you know, we'll make it to standard. I think it's a forty-foot top and whatever, and, um, I told him we have culverts to do right there, and if he doesn't mind some of the. Wet dirt, because we always, you know, we're gonna do those two on eight, you know, we could donate some dirt to him, and he was. Willing to accept that too as well, so it'll benefit us too, it'll be somewhere to get rid of some waste fill at the same time, so.
We entertain a motion to allow the field access on County Eight, you said?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion is, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the field approach on County Eight, any other discussion?
Can I ask a couple questions?
Absolutely.
So, is this, this is a public road that just hasn't been maintained, that were, that you're going to be. Going in and making usable for the landowner?
No, it'll just strictly be an approach off the highway.
Okay.
Into a field.
And that's gonna you, so what's the cost to the county to develop this, is it?
It'd be zero cost, I told them that he would have to build the approach.
Sure.
That's how we do it for development and everything else, if someone's gonna put an approach, they just have to follow, there is a standard that we do have. And it'll, well, the new one will be hopefully in the new comprehensive plan when we get through that, but as of right now, we're still using the old standard.
Okay.
So we'll make them follow the standard, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, I haven't looked, it was, like I say, I was right as we were leaving yesterday when he came in. But I know roughly off the top of my head, I know it's at least a forty-foot top, just because of egg equipment, now we, he's gonna need that to turn.
Okay.
Into this field anyway.
I, I just.
Okay, thanks, Paul, so. Did, since Paul's here, did you guys wanna ask, or do you guys need any more information on the soft spots? What the state came up with that, are we good with that?
Let's handle the motion at least, and I don't have any more questions, thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, I forgot, we're at that point.
Uh, any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, DOT spec, that's fine.
Wanna add that to the motion, Candy. Okay, the motion is to approve the. Field approach on Highway Eight, uh, design standards, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried.
And I guess, like I say, unless we wanna talk a little more with Paul about the state funding the soft spot repair, that's all I have.
I don't know that we need to know any of those details.
Jason, where were those areas that Mr. Eidsness, uh, on Ramsey Four?
Okay, it was, uh, Noonan Section twenty-four, twenty-five, and Newbury Northwest Section of nineteen.
So Noonan Sections twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah, I'm assuming it must be right in the line, he must be where that slew lies, must cover the section line there. Because when we looked it on GI, GIS, I guess that's what it appeared, and then it'll come through to the east. And it'll drain back to Fox Lake is what it'll do on that, on the east side of four. The ditch kinda loops around, and then it comes back into there. So, I know, like you said, would. The thought process is to get water away from that slew to make the soft spot better, but we're gonna move it to another spot, so I. That's why I was thinking, we wanna take it to the waterboard, so have someone look at it, who knows, the water basin drainage are better than I do. The other thing I was gonna mention, I guess, before I do step away, is the load limits, they'd come off yesterday here in Ramsey County. They went off statewide pretty much on Friday, I had one call on Friday, I told them we were leaving them until at least Monday. I kicked back and forth, talked with Commissioner Volk yesterday morning about possibly leaving them on. Or the gravel section, but when I went into Load Pass and called Load Pass at eight o'clock, the entire area, Eddie Benz, everybody's off. So how do you let somebody load and then tell them you can't, you know, it's just almost impossible to enforce that. Be a nightmare anyway, so they're gonna be loaded, they're gonna be going, so they are off, you know.
Okay.
The roads are soft, we all know that, and probably not ready, but everybody's in the same boat, I guess, and they went off, so, so we're at.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jason?
Yeah. Yep.
I guess we had the pre-construction meeting for eighty-ninth Avenue Northeast, um, from the rest area going north. Um, from the rest area going north last week, and they're planning on getting signs up starting tomorrow. And starting putting erosion control in, close, so they're gonna be probably a couple of weeks out as far as moving dirt. Um, there'll be a change order request coming through. Um, probably at your next meeting, um, to fix some of the soft spots on that road, and the state has tentatively said that they would. Um, be on board with funding that as well. So, but we haven't got the full change order drafted and approved by the contractor yet. They did give us pricing, but we just gotta get the paperwork done. Um, and then your emergency relief projects, those four spots were replacing culverts, those bid June thirteenth. Um, which probably have the commission make a motion to advertise for construction engineering services. Um, and then set up a selection committee for that. Um, just so that's processes started, because you have to advertise for three weeks through the state, um. Prior to making that, or prior to having the, to get, do the RFP, get your proposals like you did for the design, um, I think uh, yeah, sure. Volk was on that selection committee and Wilhelm, I believe, you think you were on that too, right?
Right, possibly, yeah.
Yeah, me and Greg in here doing interviews for the design, remember, um, so they do that for construction too, since they can't combine them on ER jobs. Um, so if you don't wanna set up a selection committee and then um, make the motion to advertise. For a construction engineering, then they'll fund eighty percent of the, of that as well.
Okay, so you're. We don't need to do that now, we gotta wait.
I would, I would probably do that now.
Okay.
Um, the bids come in June thirteenth for construction, but.
Three weeks after that, right?
Oh, you could, you could start that now, put the ad out, then you won't. Just in case the contractor, because the way that DOT used to take a month to turn around construction contracts, but now with electronic bidding and. They're, they sometimes turn them around within a week, so we wanna, we wanna have a construction engineer onboard. When their stuff's ready, just in case they wanna jump in and get them done.
Okay, so somebody wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion to get that had in, we have to put it in the paper, right?
Um, no, it gets advertised through the DOT website.
Okay, to advertise it's free DOT um, website and move on for the. Engineering side of it, right?
Yeah, construction engineering for the emergency relief projects.
I was second.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say nay. Motion carried, uh, who wants to sit on the committee?
How many do you need?
Usually they do, you can do either full commission or any subset of that, usually they do. But it's most convenient, is so you don't have to have be a public meeting, since you're interviewing. Um, in case you do get more than one proposal, usually they do two commissioners and the superintendent, it's pretty common.
Okay, there's one. Alright, Mr. Wilhelm, Mr. Volk are your committee. With you, Jason. Uh, we have Candy pointed out, we don't have a motion to accept. Uh, the engineering contract for the construction of eighty-ninth Street in South Minnewakan, we need a motion to accept that.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Matty. You're up. And you didn't bring enough for everybody. That's so rude.
I know, I didn't follow classroom rule. Yeah, I'm sure you study it every night. Good morning, I. Have not been here in a long time, so I'm excited to be back. My name is Maddie Sharp, I am the director at the Lake Region Public Library. And I'm just here to give a super quick recap of our annual report, um, just because they changed. Sentry code to say that this had to be done by July first instead of in July of each year, so I wanted to be sure that. We're complying with the law, so, um. Twenty-twenty-four was another awesome year. Um, we had a ton of capital projects that happened in twenty-twenty-four. Um, we painted the entire interior of the library, so no more uh, varying shades of pistachio green walls. On every single surface, uh, we replaced the blinds in the community room with a motorized system. That is fully accessible, light blocking and uh, very secure. Uh, we have a remote access point off the east door to the parking lot that allows for. Uh, individuals to utilize the outer hallway and therefore the community room outside of library hours. Um, we also uh. Replaced the HVAC system, which we knew was gonna be a big job, um. It was a little over fifty-six thousand dollars in total, um, but uh. We were able to raise or budget for. Um, almost all of that, and with a contribution from the Lake Region Public Library Foundation for eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, we were able to cover that in totality, which was great. On average, we're seeing almost a thirty percent decrease in our monthly electricity costs because of that, which is excellent. Um, and so, that is, the, the building needed some attention last year. And uh, and it got the much-needed attention, and now moving forward, we're gonna be able to. Return our focus uh, back to our services and initiatives. Um, on page five is my uh, one of my favorite pages of just rundown of kind of services that we. Have and that we offer and um, and every kind of metric that we typically. Look at increased from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, save for sessions on public computers. For some reason went down slightly, um, couldn't quite tell you why, uh, maybe people are using the computer longer. Would be a hypothesis that I have, but I, otherwise, I truly have no idea, but um. We had a pretty good increase in active cardholders, we offered way more programs, we had more program participants. We saw more yearly visitors, the equivalent of the population of Devil's Lake. More visitors in twenty-twenty-four than we saw in twenty-twenty-three, um. We saw circulation uh, increase as well across the board, both in digital and physical items. Um, and our program attendance, you know, we almost, we almost broke that five thousand. Mark uh, for our two-hundred-and-thirty-two programs that we offered. And I know that this year, um, and we're just starting June here now. We offer two-hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty-two programs total in twenty-twenty-four, now in twenty-twenty-five, we have offered a hundred and. Fifty-six, so we are well on track to blow that number out of the water as well. Um, on page seven is our uh, typical breakdown of just our kind of fiscal report, uh, and so that. Shows again, um, our typical, what we get uh, from our mills that are levied on our behalf. This year, the high chart is a little different because we were very fortunate to get a. Good number of public funds, um, between. The North Dakota State Library Library Vision Grant Program, which uh, we brought in a little under eighteen thousand dollars for painting and. Uh, blinds and security access, um, and the North Dakota Department of Public Instruction, we received twenty thousand dollars for our successful summer reading program. Um, and, and other things, uh, so we had a ton of public funds, you know, over fifty-seven thousand dollars there. And then we solicited tons of grants and private donations, mostly for the HVAC system, but for all sorts of initiatives that we're doing as well. Um, and so between those two, you know, that's a ninety-seven, ninety-eight thousand dollars that uh, that we didn't see in twenty-twenty-three. So, uh, in twenty-twenty-three, the Ramsey County contribution was much greater, um, but uh. But it is still our, our number one, um, the largest funding source, and we are eternally grateful. For the mills that are levied on our behalf. Um, the expenditures, as usual, kind of with any kind of. Public service, uh, like a public library, salaries and benefits are the biggest cost. Um, the capital expenses, again, the, we had almost twenty percent of our entire budget had to go towards capital expenses, that will not. Be the case moving forward, um, because so much of that was the HVAC and the various uh, building improvements that we made. Um, and I would clarify that the collection expenses of twenty-seven thousand dollars was uh, for the library collection. Not sending people to collections, that was a question that came up once and. That would be crazy pants, uh, but no, that was for updating and maintaining and, and uh, contributing to the collection. And otherwise, uh, we, just some fun facts that I like to look at, um, it's hard to. Look back on five years when five years ago was twenty-twenty, um, and so I kinda went back to twenty-nineteen. To look at some things and uh, visits and circulation continue to rise uh, since twenty-nineteen. We've had over a hundred and ninety thousand visits since we first installed the staff gates that are counting those visits. And so, we're well over two hundred thousand now by the time we are here today even, um, which is really exciting. And we've circulated uh, almost a hundred and seventy-nine thousand materials, so I would guess that by the end of this year, we will have circulated. Well over two hundred thousand materials as well. Um, on page nine is just a short uh, rundown of the Lake Region Public Library Foundation, some things that they have supported recently. Uh, they did contribute towards the completion of painting the interior of the building and updating some interior signage. Uh, and then, again, they did also um, contribute towards the HVAC system, which was incredibly important. Uh, they are also working on establishing a Friends of the Library Group, which is a membership-based sort of. Um, way to support your library in a pretty easy and beneficial way, um. So it gets you things like early access to the book sale, um, cool little. Pins and, and other things, you get to say that you're a friend of the library and um, and other kind of special programs just for you, it gets you. Uh, to have a say in the kinds of programs that we offer and um, and it's really exciting and. Uh, we'd love to see you there, so that QR code will bring you to more information. That is kind of it, uh, I will of course let you peruse on your own time unless there are any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, please.
So if you have a total revenues of four oh six and you have expenditures of four fifteen percent of nine thousand dollars.
The foundation.
Okay.
Yep, yep, they covered that, it was just at the end of that.
Asking that you're not in the red.
Absolutely, yep, it was just as of end of year twenty-twenty-four, these were our totals, the foundation contribution came in twenty-twenty-five. Absolutely, absolutely.
It looks like.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Matty?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Cool, um, I'll see you again soon, asking for money.
Well, we got some time, we got fifteen minutes here, uh, we moved to old business, lease for the abstract office?
Yes, uh, I have sat down with Downey, um. We, there are a lot of smaller details that I think are worth adding in, um, just. Standard provisions and leases generally, cancellation of contract, violation of contract, what happens in those situations. Um. I think I have pretty much everything that both sides are gonna want to have in a lease. Uh, especially for twenty years, uh, we wanna make sure that we're not only protecting. The county, but also making sure that they have some certainty in the space that they're leasing for that amount of time. Um, so with the extra details such as, you know, a sign out on the brick that was discussed at a previous commission meeting, but. Um. Just putting all of that in a contract so that everybody's on the same page as to how it's gonna be handled. Uh, from here, uh, I think it's probably worth going through those details, cuz. There are some negotiation points that I think the building committee, uh, the courthouse committee should probably discuss. Just to see, you know, how big do we want the sign to be on the side of the building, you know, do we need it to be in a window, does it need to be on brick? Do we want to let them make permanent changes to the outside of the building? Just those sorts of details so that once they get into the space, there's not negotiation again at that point. Um, so I, I'm putting together a, a sample lease, um. I would uh, request that. The building committee meets uh, ahead of the. Um, commission meeting on the sixteenth, if we could do that on the Monday, the sixteenth. Or I'm sorry, the meeting is on the seventeenth, if we could meet on Monday, the sixteenth to discuss some of those details, uh. I can put together a um, sample lease, and if we're ready to move forward at that point. Uh, we can be, uh, my hope is that we can have a lease, at least ready to be signed by early July. Um, for both the abstract office and the county to have a full understanding of what the contract will look like. And at that point, we'll be able to make final decisions on what's. Uh, what the decision is, sign the lease, move forward with it. Or, or something else, but there, there are some small details that are better to be worked out on the front end than the back end. Um, that's where I'm at currently.
Alright, with the building committee, that. Can you guys meet on the sixteenth?
I, I'm just, I'm out the seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, I won't be here at the next commission meeting, we're at a state's Chinese conference down in Bismarck. Um, whatever needs to be prepared, I'll have to the commission beforehand and. Uh, with any sort of explanation, but. Um, I just, I wanna keep things moving as quickly as we can so that we have some certainty, um. Especially for that October first date and other such things, just the sooner we can have certainty for all parties, the better.
Okay.
One earlier, that works for me too, bud.
Well, uh, I'm, I'm out a little bit over the next week, uh, so, uh, maybe we can meet this week if y'all have time. Thursday, but I'll, I'll, I'll get in contact with everybody offline and we'll, we'll try and meet sometime before the next meeting.
Okay. I don't know if we'll get through Home Rule, but let's start the discussion.
Uh, I do have an update on that as well, uh, Candy uh, pulled the minutes, the. Uh, motion to start a Home Rule Committee was done on March eighteenth. Uh, statute says we have sixty days to get a committee rolling on that, so. Uh, that motion dies, that's. The motion to start a Home Rule Committee dies at this point. Um, that motion can be remade, um, but there's, there's nothing more to be done on that specific motion that was made on that day. Not to say that you can't remake the motion today and restart the process or reconsider and recruit before you, the motion is made again. Uh, sort those sorts of things out, but that's where we're at.
Okay, well, like I said before, I think it's worth a discussion, um. I guess I could say I dropped the ball, cuz I should have been mentioning this on uh, coffee time. To try and get some public awareness out there, um. So I guess it's in your hands, gentlemen.
Well, I think it would be the county to take a look at becoming a home rule, uh, county. If nothing more than simply giving us some more flexibility and power. Our funding is done, yeah. Some of the limitations that's been placed upon us with the legislature, I think having a home rule county would. Would certainly benefit the county and give us an opportunity to maybe generate revenue from a different source than just property taxes. So, I'm, was disappointed that we didn't get any.
Yeah.
In doing it, but we've gone down this road before and. Um, it's failed a couple of different times on the ballot, and so whether or not people have an appetite for, for that again.
Right.
Um. As I mentioned before, um, back in March, I think, keeping, keeping the home rule charter very simple. As I mentioned before, back in March, I think keeping, keeping the home rule charter very simple and straight and simplified. Had to avoid any confusion. Be very straightforward with what we want to do and why we want to do it would be beneficial for that committee. And those are my thoughts anyway, so. Anybody else, anything else? I think I would go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead. Look into a home rule committee. Yeah, try to have that established within the next sixty days and. I think that as a motion. Just open it up for discussion.
Like I said, I think it's it's prudent to put everything on the table. Finance is what they are. It has to go to the who to the people, so they'll have the final say. But I don't think we can not have the discussion. I think that's important myself. Like I said, I'll I'll make a note here every coffee time to get it out in the public as much as we can. I don't know what else we can do. I'm not going to beg anybody. I can tell you that. It's kind of, well, it's disappointing that, you know, at least one person didn't even ask about it. So I I agree with Jeff. I think it, I think we take another run at it and have the discussion.
I think a lot of why you're not getting any attention to it is because it's asking for more money.
Yeah, I agree.
I get what Jeff is saying. It's a different avenue, but it's not going to change the homeowners. Taxes. It's going to be another revenue on top of the taxes and I get it would create more money from others. That probably would come through our community, but it's still a burden on the essentially the home. But that's my opinion. I see both sides of it.
Yeah. Well, I do too, but I mean, I think it's, you know, prudent to have a discussion and if.
Yeah, I agree.
You know.
Discussion is probably needed to have and I'm not not disagreeing on that. But I'm just saying, I think a lot of it is.
No, it there. Yeah, it's there. The public is. I think whether it's sales tax or property tax, they're tired of it.
I think there's a lot more, especially our community, there's a lot more people strapped than.
And for clarity, the commission can reduce the mills levied according to the amount of sales tax raised. There can be offsets where if there's a certain amount of sales tax revenue coming in, the subsequent years mill levies for law enforcement purposes can be reduced when their budget is being met by different revenue sources. So it it can reduce the property tax on the individual homeowner as we're shifting a little bit more of the tax burden to revenue sales, which not only our local citizens are paying for, but that gets a lot of the tourism paying for a little bit more of the burden that they place on our community as well. It's not reducing our overall tax rate, but it certainly shifts a little bit of the burden away from our homeowners here in Ramsey County.
I totally agree with what you're saying. But in the last eight years, when we've added something to our community and looking at the equalization. There's nothing in there to say what we lost. It only says what we gained. Are we losing as much as we're gaining? If we don't bring in some kind of revenue or businesses to create more revenue, all we're doing is upping what we have.
Sure.
You have to bring something in to create. You can't just constantly beat up the bush on the people that are here with businesses. We need to bring in some kind of businesses to create more revenue.
Sure.
You know, you can ask fifteen percent. But if you don't have more businesses coming here, it just puts a lot of burden on what we already have.
Sure.
You know? And I see what on the other side that we'll be talking about it is what came, but what left? Are we losing more than what we're gaining? I don't know. We got to look at both sides.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's my, that's a tough sale that I I just, I've been in this community for almost thirty years. I just don't see a huge growth. And I don't know why. I don't know what we're doing. And it's not just all of us sitting here, so the whole public, what, how can we entice something to come here to help us? You you know what I mean?
And I think you're asking more of a rhetorical question, but just a little bit of the answer is the planning zoning comprehensive plan that's being put together if businesses have more certainty in coming to our community that things are going to work a certain way and it's going to be applied equally. That will be at least a lot more stability that our community provides.
Definitely a huge start.
Yeah. And so the this commission has taken steps to do that just in the time that I've been here to try and bring more to the community. And those are good steps.
And to the point, I mean, if even if this commission fully intends to lower the mill rate, you know, offset our lot, LEC costs with sales tax money or whatever we decide to do there. We can't predict what the commission may be forced to do. Oh, farther down the road. I mean, you know, I mean, there's some of that is beyond our control. You know, we just do a, we can, we're looking at today, so. But we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I will second. More, just saying, I, I don't know how else to get the information out there.
Right. I mean, we've.
Try and help the public understand why we're doing this and.
Yeah. Like I said, I'll I usually take my agenda into the coffee time and I'll, I got it written in big letters here to make sure I mention it every time and, you know. Really feel like I probably did drop the ball because it's about the only place people really catch what's going on, I think, is on the radio, so. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried. It's two minutes to nine, so Beth, I guess we'll let you start your explanation and we'll go from there, so. We will recess the commission meeting and open the county equalization meeting.
Good morning.
Morning, Beth.
First on the agenda that you have placed in front of you is a motion to approve the city assessments as presented. That was sent in your packet. Rob had forwarded that over. He's unable to make it here today. They already had their meeting and those assessments were approved at the city level.
Is there a motion to approve city assessments?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve city assessments. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, there's a second to the motion? Is there any discussion? I don't know if Beth will be able to answer much on the city's side of it, but.
I don't think I want to.
Is there any other discussion? Oh, I just. Oh, I just paused that. Do we need a motion to stop the meeting? Okay, well, let's back up and fix my screw up. We need a motion to adjourn from the county commission meeting and convene the board of equalization.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. My screw up brought us right to nine o'clock so we can start over. Motion to approve the city assessments. Technically, we've got that. Is that okay? All right, any, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
All right, we move on to number two on the agenda, which is pages two to four in your packet. The first one is a motion to approve values of townships contracted for county assessment. We currently still do have one assessor, Mike Beamer, that's working in two townships. And those are listed within our, all of those changes that you see on those pages. So that first motion would be to approve his assessments. And they went through their townships and were approved by their townships already.
So do you want?
Just a motion to approve the townships.
Contracted.
That were contracted.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve values township contracted with Beth's office?
I would so move.
Motion in a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any questions for Beth on the values of townships contracted with county? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next motion would be for the two townships that have their own assessor. Is there a motion to approve the values?
Move to approve. Second.
Motion in the second to approve the values of the townships provided by their own assessor. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
All right, the third is for page five. That is inundated land classification applications and a motion to approve those. That is actually a state application that is offered through our office. And there aren't any new ones. They're the same as they've been in the past or kind of actually over the years they've we've had less and less, I think, with it being a little drier in some areas that we haven't had as many.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
Right, and last is in regard to agricultural land values. It is your decision on if there would be a change in the percentage or or an increase in the value for this upcoming year. It is my thought that we would leave on the same as we are in tolerance with the state of North Dakota and wouldn't need to make a change this year.
Is there a motion or discussion?
I would move the way, keep the egg values unchanged. Second.
Motion in a second to keep the egg values the same as they were last year. Any discussion?
I do got a question. Can this be lowered?
It can.
Any other questions? Still need a motion.
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, sorry. Reading and thinking at the same time doesn't always work. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Uh, I guess I have to ask if there's any public comment. Maybe I should. Seeing no public comment, do you have anything you need to?
They're just examples of exemptions or credits that our office off offers and that we're getting out.
Any other questions for Beth? Motion to adjourn the tax equalization meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion to adjourn the tax equalization meeting, motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed, say nay. We'll reconvene the board of commissioners. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, Beth.
Uh, human resource hiring committee update. We had two applications. The three of us met and decided they didn't quite meet the requirements. So we reopened that and Candy is researching, consulting person to do it. Possibly to save the county some money.
Did you leave the job requirements or qualifications when you reposted that?
I believe we did.
Okay.
Yes, we did.
So you didn't.
No, no, we felt that that was the minimum. We were willing to take a lot of experience instead of education, but both the people that had applied didn't have a lot of they had experience, but not to the point where we thought it would be.
Sure.
Acceptable.
Good.
But no, I'm not a big fan of lowering the standard to get to find somebody to do it. I know that could possibly strap Candy's office a little bit, but so that's where we're at with that. Uh, any other unfinished business? New business. First on the list is discussion of the letter to the governor. I sent you guys a fairly rough draft. Kind of indicating what I'm thinking. Daniel did do some grammatic, grab grammar doctoring for me. He also had the suggestion that possibly we just start with a letter informing the governor that, you know, things aren't as peachy up here as everybody thinks and then possibly removing the suggestions for solving it into a different letter. Once we start a dialogue with the governor, I'm certainly fine with that. And we change that letter accordingly. So is there any discussion?
I know the governor's office was briefed after the Devil's Lake Outlet Advisory Meeting. Where we had, you know, a couple of public comments regarding the inundated land situation. Director Hawes is, you know, an agency head, and so he reports directly to the governor. So that, all that information was conveyed back to the governor, governor's office. They're aware of the situation and, but whether or not we want to go a little further and ask for some assistance on his behalf.
Go ahead.
I would, I, I just as building relationships, Governor Armstrong is new to the office. He hasn't, I, I, not to my knowledge, hasn't been up here and really seen all of what's inundated and how it's affected Ramsey County, Benson County, all of the surrounding counties. I I would start with attempts to invite him out to come see, come see Ramsey County, Devil's Lake, the lake itself. Just so that when you're making requests and talking about details, he can visualize what you're talking about as opposed to a piece of land up in rural North Dakota, northeast North Dakota that he's never seen before, isn't overly familiar with. But to also put a face to the name to have him be more personally acquainted with Ramsey County and Devil's Lake itself. So that when we make requests or make suggestions on how things might be able to be done differently, there's a little bit more of a human aspect to the conversation as opposed to just numbers in fourteen fifty-four versus fourteen sixty-one and focusing more on the impact that it has on the individuals here in Ramsey County. Just, just to start out the conversation, obviously, the demands that or just suggestions on how things should go and the rough draft are, are things that have been talked about and people have varying opinions on here in the community, but not starting the conversation there is what my recommendation would be. And perhaps working through the director of DWR to. And perhaps working through the director of DWR to facilitate that as that's a good avenue to. Be talking to the governor through somebody who has the institutional knowledge of what's going on out here as well.
So I guess I, I think that's good advice. Um.
Being new. Relatively new to the office, let's start out friendly.
Yeah, well, I wasn't trying to. Sorry, I just, I just started putting thoughts on paper and that's where we ended up.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of emotion around here.
Yeah. So with that, I'll. Change my draft and I'll get it back to you guys and. Probably run it through my AI. Checker over here. Um. With that, we have a letter of transfer for FEMA funds from uh. I believe it's treasurer's office.
Um, so this is something that um Kevin and I did before he left. These are all the FEMA um accounts. Um, these are administrative funds that were um left over. Um, all these accounts are, all these funds are, they're all closed out. Um, so now they can be, I think he discussed it in a couple. Two, three, four different meetings that these funds can be used for anything. Um, so. We went over the figures um and we will transfer the funds into the highway tax. Like, like he had discussed. Um, and then. We'll close out those funds so that Jason doesn't have to, you know, worry about those at budget time. So you're welcome. Like, um.
So, um. This would close everything out to twenty thirteen?
Yep, and then there would only be. Two. Um, twenty twenty-two. No, I don't think, yeah, there's.
But it clean.
There's like two or three left.
So there's any questions on this? Is there a motion to approve the letter and move the funds?
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve uh moving the five hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine twenty-six sixty-three. Um, from the individual flood. Events to the highway tax fund. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Uh, couple of the. Agenda items that were added. Um, Commissioner Volk, you had Sidwell training?
So Jeff and I and. Michelle and Beth had a meeting with Sidwell a couple of weeks ago of. Trying to bring them on and letting Steve go on his money or on his. Ways that he's getting from us now along with the, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, along with IT, because Michelle, I believe, has. A handle on all the IT stuff, but she's needing some help with Sidwell. And we could have Sidwell come out and explain, would he explain to us what kind of services he would give us along with training for Michelle? And we talked about giving her a year window to get this training, get her up to speed. And not to pick on Steve, but it's just with all the changing constantly, Sidwell is probably the best to go with. And get her on track. And then after a year's time, we would look at it again and. Michelle would take over the GIS and if she was to need help with. The land stuff, the soil samples, and maybe that's something that we could have Sidwell stay on with. So maybe that's only ten percent of what we would need. But I think we need to move on and get Michelle as much training as possible.
I agree.
So, and I would like to do this prior to coming to tax season so that she has a good handle on it and it would help Beth as well. So that we're not.
So is this.
And if, if the questions out there, when we had brought on Michelle, we knew that we were gonna have to do something. This is why we kept Steve on as long as we did, but I think we've got our whole as much information as we could from Steve. So my suggestion would be to discontinue his services along with, correctly, who was the IT?
Joe Kramer.
Joe Kramer, along with Joe Kramer. And move on with Michelle, because that's what we hired her for and have the help of Sidwell. Yes, I'm just looking for your guys' advice if that's something.
Well, it's.
I think we definitely need to move on. How do we go about it? Do you guys want Sidwell to come in here and give his spiel? Or is it something that we would like to put a motion forward so that we could move on? And I can't remember what the price was.
We had a couple different um price quotes from Sidwell. One was for thirty-eight thousand and one was for twenty-nine thousand. And that was some of their software, uh, their farms, um, which is kind of our soils, uh, mapping stuff. And then um training for that as well. And so that one was, I think, twenty-nine thousand three forty.
Yeah, and so looking at the twenty-nine thousand, I know it's money that we probably haven't budgeted, but I was looking at it, we're having Steve. Kramer on, we could offset some of that. And go wayside so that we can get her up to train. I think we're at a point where we need to go to the next step.
Yep, I agree.
And I think this gives Michelle the tools that she needs to be successful job that she was doing, so.
Right.
So this is a one-time. Yeah, this would be for a year and then we would revisit it. Obviously, talking with Michelle and Beth to make sure that, yes, we're up to speed. We feel like we could take it on.
I, I do think the farm's license is a natural.
Yeah, so as far as the soil stuff, that's gonna probably be something that we're not gonna be able to get away with not having.
Just to kind of clarify that part for our office, back in two thousand twelve, the state mandated that all counties use soils for evaluations. And at that time, our GIS department was hired and they were to, to do this for us instead of hiring outside of the county. So a, a program was created within the county that does all of our soils currently. Um, Sidwell has the majority of the counties um that they do this for currently. So we would just be moving from having that program being ran by a person in-house to be paying for this farm's application. And then Sidwell would be doing our agland values for us with um Michelle being kind of their coordinator of that kind of thing. I, I wouldn't think we'd go back to the program.
The cost would go down from twenty-seven thousand to, I don't know what it would be just for the farms. But it wouldn't be twenty-seven thousand because she would be taking the GIS portion of it. And they would be updating her with that information and she would be able to upload it into GIS, is the way I understood.
Good.
So that cost, she'd be doing a lot of legwork, so the cost would come down drastically.
So an example of um the duties that she may take on more fully in the future would be every time a, a parcel is split. Or something, you have to redraw that parcel and those soils have to be split into each other and then recalculated across the county. And to keep our county average, so she would hopefully be able to draw those parcels in in the future.
How to do that, because we're not getting that training.
But it would be a probably a continual cost to the county to have Sidwell um and their programming in the future.
At some place, so other counties, when we were looking at it, some counties would like basically like have. Their GIS department at like eighty to ninety percent and then have Sidwell ten percent. So that they're constantly updating our GIS with our GIS manager. So that we're full.
So. Is this something we can start now or is there, do we have to wait for budget?
I don't know what we're, I don't know what we're paying currently to Kramer and Steve. But I was looking at what we're paying them, I think would offset this.
Okay.
That's something that we'd have to figure out then. To be honest, Lee, I don't think this is something that we can wait.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, it, I, I agree.
I think we're gonna catch ourselves. In a bind if we don't start.
Well, right now, we're double paying and that doesn't make sense.
Hundred percent.
So you concur with his assessment?
I would say the sooner the better for everybody. You know?
Hey, and Sidwell isn't a fly-by-night company.
Right.
We're the only county in the state that's looking at them. I have a map here of their customers and it's quite explicit. All the glue is Sidwell customers. You know, a good, good portion of the counties within the state or in Dakota are already operating, selling level of Sidwell.
Like I said, now they're not all using them a hundred percent, you know, some counties don't have GIS. But we hired someone too.
Right.
But gotta get her up to speed.
Yep.
Yep.
And they are familiar with our.
Yes.
Tyler technology.
They have worked with Steve.
That we currently are.
Yep.
That we currently have. The county had hired Sidwell um in the beginning, prior to us having GIS. And they drew all of our parcels and began the whole project for us.
Right.
You want me to make a motion?
No.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, moving on from where we're at today, that we bring Sidwell on. Um, this starting, what do you want to start date? Should we put a start date in there?
For, for me, if it would work with Steve, I'd be most comfortable with keeping Steve on until July first. Because our abstract goes in the end of June and so he would recalculate our agland values for this year. And then we would begin the process with them.
Well, and that's fair to them, given.
I would make the same motion with a drop date of Kramer and Steve July first.
Rock, paper, scissors. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
I have one other question. We have it in our packet. These appeals, since you're up here. I see on here. We have. These in the red, why are they so drastically different?
So you're asking why he had reduced or made a, a change and why the, it was such a change? I reviewed that, so it'd be more of a question for Rob, but I would assume he sat down with them and went through it and maybe had some information that was. Incorrect, you know, or something like that. Sometimes it makes a building like. Um, you may assume that the building has full cement inside or something like that, or you assume it has all its water, things like that. Yeah, but it would be more, but something like that. You usually find out some new information from the homeowner. That's why communication is great, like please call our office, we want to know, because we are assuming a lot of times and we're prepared to have it.
Alright, thank, thank you. Uh, since Sheriff Lang bugged out of the room there, um. Meeting with the city about moving sheriff's office uh in the PD. Oh, that's okay. No more phone calls here for a minute, you sit down. Uh, last week, uh, Jeff and I and Sheriff. Uh, had a meeting. Um, the city asked us to consider, um. They're looking at the Western State Finance Building out there on Highway Two. As possible home for the police department. Um, they wanted to know if we had. Or would consider moving the sheriff's office in with them. Um. The gist of the meeting was uh, we were gonna end up three-thirty this afternoon doing a walkthrough. I told them my position was, I don't feel moving the sheriff away from the jail is prudent to. What we should be doing. Um. They, they, of course, had uh, you know, some theories on spent expenses that. Might be in the new jail, it might not be in the new jail. Um.
The, the concern I have is with the. Police department that we had now or the county jail. We pulled apart, right?
Yeah.
We give it to the jail. Why do we want to get into another binding contract that I don't know if there was really the county. City happy in that, in that situation and now we're going back to that?
Right, that's, that's, it's just.
Hard to say yes to something like that and um frustration I have a little bit as they. Are kind of trying to pull away from the county jail way it is. And their idea was to move uptown to help. Deter crime and now all of a sudden we're moving to a building that's on the outskirts of town. There's a little bit of. Not understanding of why we were gonna do city halls and now we're just gonna do that. It's conflicting and then it's a little frustration and I guess maybe because I'm on the. The jail down there, it was really frustrating for me. With us trying to move forward and finding a new facility or somehow to fund a new facility and one of our biggest players wants to move on.
Yeah.
Well, and I think that the sheriff has always been a part of Ramsey County and the jail. Um, aspect of it that, you know, that's within our constitution, central code, that the counties are responsible for a, a jail. Um, you know, we look right out our window here, our commissioner room. Yeah, there's a sheriff's house which used to occupy jail. Sheriff has always been located within the, the jail um within the county. And so I think giving some continuity to the law enforcement center and some clarity to their staff down there. That they're not gonna be left out as on an island to themselves, that the, you know, the Ramsey County will always be a part of that. Um, facility, um, whether it's in its current location or in a new location. I think it's important for uh staff morale and uh just clarity uh within the community as well. So.
I, I agree that it's more than just dollars and cents. You know, a lot of other aspects to this thing.
We have really made some great strides down at the law enforcement center. I'm really proud of the staff down there that we have. Um. You know, they've made a lot of, of uh great strides over the last several years. Uh, they've really chilled and come together and I don't want to see anything that disrupts that. That rocks that boat, so to speak, and we just had an excellent um inspection from DOCR. And I want to continue that in the direction that it's currently in. And I think this would just give a little positive uh positivity to that if we can come up with a clarification. That our sheriff's department isn't going anywhere anytime soon, uh, not unless the jail comes with them.
Right.
So. That's one of the main reasons that I brought this up.
No, and it's, it's appropriate. Um. So just in the. Theme of trying to get information, is there? As far as the new jail goes, is uh. Do you have a basic plan? Is this something that like maybe all the commissions need to sit down and have a briefing with the law enforcement board just to? Get.
We, we've gotten things put together.
Uh, I, I think having that, that big meeting would. Sometime in the near future would be very prudent.
I think so too.
You know, just to let the other commissioners that are a part of the law enforcement center know what. What the law enforcement center board has been working on the past couple of years. Uh, with the design of the building, um, why we need one, um, a new one and. Where we're possibly looking at various locations and then some of our funding aspects of that whole situation. You know, the legislature, uh, I felt maybe let us down just a little bit in that, in some of the funding requests that were proposed through legislation. Uh, this past session, uh, they do have a study that's gonna be out there looking at the needs for county. Uh, correctional facilities and so moving on from that and uh. You know, at some point we're gonna have to come to the voters of Ramsey County and ask them to. Um, help fund a funded jail and that's gonna be a big ask and. We want to make sure that we have all our ducks in a row and all the players that are currently involved in that. Facility, all on board.
Well, if I'm somewhat. Up to speed, it, it might be, you know, since there's other counties that uh Cavalier or Walsh.
No, it's Walsh County was looking.
They, they just did that and it just failed.
And it just failed.
So I mean, there might be other entities that.
And the sheriff has reached out correctly, I'm wrong, sure. Yep, he has reached out to these other counties. Not only the counties that we have with us, but to try to get other counties to join us to try to bring. The burden of the taxpayers here in Ramsey Co- County help. In maybe facilitating a new facility.
So just as a. Food for thought or a question, would it be prudent to, if we have this meeting with the L E C board have. Uh, representation from these other counties so they all can. Um, at least hear what, what's going on. I mean, I, I think it's.
That is something that we had talked about. You know, getting all the counties that would be interested in the ones that are with us, including us, the city. To come, let's have a big meeting and. So the public knows also, okay?
Yeah, we had one initial, uh, this last one we set up, we had to cancel. There was a lot of conflict. There wouldn't be very many people that show up. Uh, so we were planning on rescheduling it. But some of the issues that we're running into is. Now with the city wanting to go in a different direction, we're kind of on hold. Because. We don't know what's gonna happen. So if the city goes their way, then we gotta take them out of the plans. If it doesn't go the way they want it, then they're back in the plans. So how do you go forward and how do you sell it to somebody else when we're in uncertainty?
Well, I guess I'm not really looking, uh, just for informational purposes, I think it'd be prudent to catch all the commission up on. On what, you know, what you're thinking.
Right, I'm just. My, my idea is you're bringing these other sheriffs and stuff in.
Right.
You're, you're seeing all this uncertainty. I may not want to jump on.
Right, we didn't want to have it where. We thought we were putting something good together, right? And then all of a sudden we have what's happening. Now is there uncertainty? Why are they pulling out in wanting to? How do you sell that?
Good.
So the city of those things to figure out what they're. Well, I think they were gonna put it up on a vote.
Yeah, yeah, they, they do have it coming up on a vote, but.
I don't know when that vote is, but I think that's.
Why twenty second?
We're kind of stuck until then. I mean, not that we couldn't inform everybody here of, you know, with our, you know, the building committee could.
Yeah, you know, I guess the, the city's gonna do what the city does and. You know, we, we can't help that, but what we can do is, is move forward on our own. And that's something that, that you know, regardless of what happens to the city at July twenty second. And where they decide to go with your police department, we're still gonna need a, a new jail at the end of the day. Um, you know, ours has reached its life expectancy and um. You know, we knock on wood and say a little prayer every day that it uh, nothing breaks majorly, you know, within the pipes or the electrical. Um, components of that facility that we would have to shut it down and transport our inmates somewhere else. Um. You know what? Most county regional um facilities are already full themselves. Yeah, that would be an incredible burden on, on our existing resources that we have, so. Um, we need to move forward with. Planning for and developing and building a jail and. Um, the sooner that happens, the better everything will be, but. It, it's, it's a time consuming process. It really, really is because it's a, it's a high dollar area. Um, Commissioner Wolf, you're well aware of the, some of the estimates that we've gotten so far from the elders and. And um, it, it's big, big numbers that are gonna be hard to swallow. But I guess the best way to eat an elephant is one way at a time. Uh, instead of all at once, so. You know, but we need all the players on, on board and I'm disappointed with the, the city, so. We'll look towards moving the police department out if we'd like to have them within our facility, but. Um, like I said, uh, the city will do what the city feels best in their best interest and we have to move forward with what's best in our interest. So.
So your meeting is tomorrow, Jeff?
No, we uh, we don't meet until the eighteenth.
Okay.
So. Second.
Okay, so if you guys would maybe throw it out to see if we could have a, a meeting just.
Yeah.
I'm not saying we're gonna say yes or no, but just, just to kid everybody.
Oh, even if, even if you guys could come to the meeting and.
All players involved and.
And our, our uh, building committee could give a rundown.
Rundown, what, what do we have and some of the different plans that we.
We could just add, add you guys to, add the players to the agenda.
So that would, oh, there, there enough room in that meeting room if all the commissions show up? Or would you have to move it?
We could make it work, we could accommodate.
We could make it work, you know, we could squeeze in a little bit in that courtroom and the L E C. Yeah, depending on who shows up, you know.
Right.
And it was brought up at the last meeting by one of the other commissioners to get them.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying is, I mean, I think it would be prudent to have.
It's not like we haven't been talking about it.
Yeah.
So that'd be the eighteenth is your next meeting?
Yes, yep.
Do you have enough time to add that to your agenda?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we could reach out and.
Yeah.
Get everybody and if we get a ninety percent would be great, you know, a hundred would be the best, but.
Yep. You're stretching it there.
Hey man, just, there, there's a lot of what the other counties.
And that, what, what?
Interest that wants to know.
I said eight, eight o'clock is that meeting?
Yes, okay.
And Candy, you can make the appropriate. Announcement so we don't catch hell from state's attorney about open meetings. Thank you. I wish I could see that kid's face. Are you smiling over there?
Yeah, he's smiling.
Uh, so back to.
Do we need to make that in any form of a motion that we do that or get together or? Or we wanna?
That would probably be best so that Candy's notice can say the commission has made a motion and decided to have a special meeting.
I will make that motion that we're adding. Them to the. Law enforcement. Meeting to.
And we'd be invited to be.
Yes, to invite. The clear as mud, Candy.
And we invite all the other participating counties. You know, we have a joint powers with Eddie and Nelson and Benson counties and the city of those lakes, so. We'd like to invite all of them there. Those commissioners that, of those other counties that haven't toured the facility. Maybe at that particular time could also have a tour.
Good idea.
Show, know why we're in need of. Not going out of the shortcomings of the, the existing facility.
Take them down into the basement.
I think most commissioners or commissions that belong to there, that are part of the J P A have toured that facility, but anybody that hasn't. Certainly welcome to, to come that day and we'll do that.
Is there a second, uh, Lane's motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Um, I. I will still attend the walkthrough this afternoon, um, just. Just for the sake of.
For the courtesy.
For the courtesy of it, um, and I'll, I'll tell them what. Well, let me do this. I take a straw poll on who, who thinks the sheriff's department should remain with the jail so I can tell them this is the. Feelings of the commission.
Well, I think if you'd like, I could make that as a motion as well, that the sheriff's department always remain a part of. Law enforcement center, the jail. And, you know, that would be. You know, I, I don't know if that would be appropriate, but I think it would be, you know, something that should be done.
Okay.
You know, just to give clarity to it.
Also, I can have a motion.
Motion in a second that the feelings of the commission are to keep the sheriff's office in. In the law enforcement center. Uh, any other discussion? Well, according to, uh. Who's the head of the. Association or North Dakota County? Aaron, Aaron, Aaron Burst. That uh, anything significant should be a roll call vote, so I think this requires a roll call vote, please.
Certainly.
Hodis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Oak.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, the last addition to the agenda was. Sheriff Lang no longer, the rumor is you. You like illegal aliens. Well, couldn't be any higher than mine when I got the phone call from the Bismarck Tribune on Friday.
Yeah, Friday was not a good day. Uh, Friday, I was alerted by the, uh. North Dakota Sheriff's Association who was contacted by the National Sheriff's Association. That the Department of Homeland Security uh issued a list of several North Dakota counties, actually seven. Ramsey County was named in it as being a sanctuary jurisdictional. County and we were defying uh federal immigration laws. Uh, we have no idea how we made the list. There's no criteria set. That we know of, uh, the National Sheriff's Association has taken the lead for us. Uh, along with the governor's office, we had a couple of our senators that are working on this. They can't tell us what criteria they used. They can't tell us what mechanism we could use to uh. Get us rectified. Uh, so after some lengthy conversation with the. National Sheriff's Association with D H S, they removed the list from their website. I know the National Sheriff's Association is pushing for them to do an apology and to get us all cleared from. The list as quickly as possible, so that's where we're at. Rest assured, we are not, I repeat, not. A uh sanctuary jurisdiction. We do not have any policies or procedures in place. We work well with our fed- federal partners. And we will continue to work well with our federal partners. We started to reach out, in fact, at ten thirty, I got a call, uh, I got a call with one of the border patrol. Uh, supervisors, so. We're just reiterating to them that we're here, we're doing business as we normally do. Enforcing local, federal, state and immigration laws to the fullest. And uh. We got other people on the other side working on it, so we'll see how long this takes us, but uh they pulled the list for now. And like I said, we have no idea how we wound up on it.
I know, uh. Friday, I mean. Daniel aware of it and he wasn't aware of any. Statutes or, you know, anything in, in, at the county level that would indicate that. He was gonna double check for me. I came up here and called Holman's office and wasn't overly polite, I guess, so if you get feedback on that, I apologize.
Well, you're not the only one. There was a lot of people that were very polite, so.
I was glad when your email came out, the Sheriff's Association was on it because. Um, that, that wholesome way, so. I, I have commented on a couple of Facebook, Facebook posts that had this list, you know, shared or whatever and I. Commented that exactly what you said, that we are not, absolutely not the sanctuary jurisdiction and that we follow all the laws that are. Are out there, so, um.
Well, in twenty twenty-three, the legislature has passed a law uh saying that we cannot have sanctuary policies. And they strengthened it this year by saying that the Attorney General's Office could investigate it. And if you're found in violation, you could lose your, some of your state funding. So, I mean, they put some teeth to it too, so there's. Uh, you would think you'd be very hard pressed to find anybody in the state of North Dakota that, that's doing this. And it, it's just confusing, it's angering and.
Well, we got.
When you don't know how you make the list and they can't tell you.
Well, that's what I said. I called the Bismarck Tribune guy back and I said, you don't have this confused with Ramsey County, Minnesota. Well, I don't, let me check. No, it says North Dakota. I said, well, that's absolutely false. You know, so I don't know if there's, if there is confusion by some government hack that.
Well, there, there must be an issue somewhere because they wouldn't have pulled it otherwise.
Right.
The website, so, um.
So like, again, I'd like to reassure Ramsey County constituents that we. Are not as following any policies that would violate the law.
And I, I did put a press release out on their Facebook page and. I wrote something up and I had to go to my AI too. He kind of had to help.
That's what I'm here for. Um, so appreciate that. Anything else on that sheriff? Anything else you wanna?
No, I just, I got some emails from Danell that I haven't been able to get to, some updates and I guess that I gotta. Phone meeting with the border patrol supervisor.
And just to add on top of what the sheriff has said, I, I did work on the press release he put out. Um, I, I, I think his press release represents the county at large very accurately. He, they don't have any policies in enforcing the law and doing their jobs out on the streets and my office has no policies that. Are favorable to illegal immigrant, illegal aliens, illegal immigrants, anybody who's here without legal status. Uh, as recently as last month, we worked with Homeland Security to have somebody who was identified. Uh, picked up, um, and he is out of our jurisdiction at this point and on his path to. Deportation wherever the federal government decides that will end up at, but we. We work well and often with our partners at every juncture, uh, so. They execute the law out in fields to the fullest extent. We prosecute to the fullest extent. There's no leeway for any specific group.
Thank you. Alright, thank you, Sheriff.
Yep. Is there anything that we need to do as far as clarification with that? You know. Provide the extra level of clarity. To the public or?
Resolution.
You certainly can, I, I mean.
You know, that we work with all of it. Two kind of agencies and.
The commission can adopt, can, can essentially uh move to adopt the sheriff's press release and re-release it as Ramsey County. Just to reiterate, I don't know that the county itself needs to change the language. and re-release it as Ramsey County. Just to reiterate, I don't know that the county itself needs to change the language of the press release. Uh, that was.
Supporting.
Yeah, and, and my intent in um my edits to what the sheriff had written was so that it would be blanket application to Ramsey County so that the commission could just adopt that position itself.
Hey, I would go ahead and make that as motion that we adopt the sheriff's press release. Yeah, all.
Information.
Information within it.
I will second that motion.
Motion and second to adopt the sheriff's press release. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Anything else for the sheriff?
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, any announcements from any of the commissioners?
I guess I only have one. Uh, Lakewood Park will be having on Sunday, June eighth for the wheelchair memorial. We have dedication ceremony. So if anybody would like to come out, he has an email, bring a long chair so you can be comfy. And it's just to show that we're uh there for wheelchairs, accessibility.
Worthwhile project. That's a good project.
And I think they're having an oldie uh fishing, fishing tournament.
They got several activities, so.
Yeah, so.
I think it will be a good event too, for kickoff.
Any other announcements from the commissioners?
Next Monday, the eighth, I believe it is, five thirty in the basement here, the planning commission will be holding the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. I guess the hope is that if there's any other input anyone may have for planning commission would make formal recommendation to the county commission.
And the draft comprehensive plan is available for viewing on the website.
Yep.
The county's website, so.
What time was that?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Or in your office, correct? So.
Anything else?
Karen, you need to say anything there?
Whoops. Hello, I'm Karen Hausman from Trichus Ferry. Um, I believe the last time that anyone was here from the state and seriously took a look at the destruction from the flood was in two thousand nine. Governor Hoven was here with several of the water commission um employees and the water commission board members. Took a bus tour that actually went out to our farm so they could see what was coming. Um, Dahl Rempel and Burgum, neither one of them that I recall were very involved with anything to do with the outlet meeting. And maybe they got an update, but we have all new people at the water commission, governor, the legislators. The legislators were also on that bus tour. And so I do believe it's a good time to get all of those new people out here to see how things have not changed here. They have not gotten better. We're still missing roads. We're still flooded. The um governor um spearheaded an economic and agricultural economic study this last year that was done with the egg department, N D S U and several of the um the businesses that benefit by egg. And so I think it would be a good time to show him that with all these acres out of production, how much bigger could that number be? But it's hard to explain it when you don't see it for yourself. I have aerial photos going back for probably two thousand twelve of the area. But what I don't have is aerial photos of how it used to look. Cause the only thing people got pictures of was their farmyard. They didn't get pictures of the expansiveness of the grain and everything that was growing. And so I do believe the state is not really fully aware of the magnitude of this situation and the um impact that it has on the county's ability to, to grow and do things. And um, you know, I'd happily pay full tax if I was happily farming that farm. So I hope that um some effort will be made. Maybe the water commission can put something together, the legislators, to get those people up here, to get them better informed um firsthand. And I know it would not be hard to get people to organize, to come and present hopefully in a calm manner. But it's a very emotional topic. So thank you for considering that.
Thank you, Karen.
Well, I guess I would just like to clarify a few things, Karen, that it has been a lot more recent than two thousand nine since somebody from the state has been up here. Oh, well, there's a lot more places within the county other than your place.
I know.
And. Well. I know, and I think um throwing all the governors under the bus like that isn't the right place to, to go. Because they've all had a, a concern and a care for what's happening on up here. And just because they don't go to your place specifically, doesn't mean they haven't been here. And I think that's a misrepresentation of, of the state and the officials that have been up here and contributed to the flooding concerns of our region. And you know, the two billion dollars worth of state and federal funds that, that have poured into our community for flood protection um didn't happen because they weren't here. No.
Okay, I, I apologize if they've been offended.
Well, I'm just want to clarify that because they weren't at your location, doesn't mean they weren't here. And to say that some of them weren't involved and, and I think is really a misrepresentation of, of the state government.
Well, I apologize to them, but um perception is reality.
Well.
So I, again, I would like them to, I would like all of these people who are new in these positions to come out here.
Okay, we'll extend that invitation.
Yeah. Cause that, we'll see what happens.
Yep.
I do know Governor Dahl Rempel at least attended most of the outlet meetings as far as I can remember. Um, but anything else, gentlemen? During the meeting.
Jason. Yes, sir. Is this the? Energy board?
Yep.